It's weird. I have to call the ordinance subcommittee meeting to order, please. Looks like we have everybody here. So, does anybody here want to talk? Public speak time?
Um, I don't know. Should I go public speak time or do you want me to speak when you're talking about the building size ordinance? Because that's why I'm here.
You can do either. We already talked about it, so.
Okay.
So, the first thing I'm going to start off with tonight is the classification of pay plan schedule. I don't know if you guys got copies, but we did get suggested changes. So, do you want to just, do you want to talk about the actual written down changes that you put in here?
Sure.
I think I can do that.
I have.
Was it email?
We can make.
Do you want me to make some copies?
Was it email?
No. We got hard copies of it. All right, I got a hard copy of it.
Do you want me to make a couple copies?
What? That's okay.
We can, we can share it together.
I've seen it, I've seen it many times before. I don't have it with me here. There's that.
There you go.
What we did was we took the prior classification listing and we looked at it taking into account, there's like about eight or so, principal clerk hyphen council on aging or principal clerk hyphen assessor. So what we did was we tried, the purpose was twofold. First, to eliminate a lot of the duplicate. So for principal clerk, we're looking to just have principal clerk. The job descriptions would have, would still remain principal clerk for a specific department because the duties are going to be different department to department, but the skills will basically be the same. We also looked at it putting in some general titles such as, what did we put in? Accounts payable at a level five or clerk, just a plain clerk at a level five. We tried to put in an admin title at each grade level up through, I believe, seven. So that, for example, if Judy left the person out, the way it stands now, I would only be able to replace her at, I believe she was at a seven. Whereas with the changing technology and the changing job requirements, if I wanted to lower it to a file clerk, we didn't have a file clerk title or we didn't have a plain clerk. So we wanted to make sure that the departments had the option in the future to place support staff at whatever level was needed.
And so, if we just, I see a couple of the new ones. So it looks like receptionist is now just general.
Correct.
So that's kind of new. But it's, it's a takeover from the council on aging, right?
Correct.
Office aide?
Yes.
Is that a new one?
That is a new one.
Okay. And maybe, I don't know, this is like a...
I'm trying to think what easiest way to do this would be.
Well, this is what we discussed earlier.
This is what we discussed, so this is the written up version.
Correct.
And so, and it's, I mean, it makes sense. So now there's, there's an assistant that's a level six, but if you didn't necessarily need an assistant and you just needed a clerk, that's a level five.
Correct.
And it's not specifically tied to any particular department or particular thing. So it's a little bit more general.
Right. When Mayor Kadra came in, her assistant had to come in at a nine because that was the only title available for her.
In most of the system.
Correct. So, but if she had wanted to go with possibly a clerk and a file clerk, which potentially, financially could have come out the same as a level nine, we didn't have that option.
Okay. I mean, this, to me, looks a lot cleaner than the old, like the old one with the B, C, Ds, As, Es, which is kind of, is a little bit confusing.
That was every time it was amended because we'd have to come back every time we wanted to add a, a different job title to a department.
Positions added, yeah.
I think we added another dispatch title and I called dispatcher.
Any questions?
Pretty much what we discussed previously about generalizing the titles is again, each job description, as you said, still exists and remains the same for each department.
Correct. And I'm starting to work with each department head about the job descriptions in their department to update the descriptions for each position.
How are, how is this being received with the different departments?
We haven't really put it out there too much. We've talked to them about, you know, in the future, what would you, what, you know, do you think you might need? And so that, the idea of having more choices was very, you know...
Okay.
And there hasn't been any discussion about downgrading anybody's current positions.
We're not looking to change any current position. Everybody will still, you know, most of the people that are in the, say, principal clerk positions, they don't say principal clerk reassessor's office or principal clerk tax collector. They just say, you know, principal clerk. So it's not that we're looking to do away with any jobs. We're just trying to look to the future and kind of streamline it for future hiring.
So that's a good point. Just reiterate, so what are you saying? No one who has a current job will be rescheduled to be something else and they'd be a little more...
Their, their level will stay the same. It'll just be...
In the future, if that person left, then maybe you could then have the option to do some other things.
Correct.
I think that's great.
Me too. And I think another thing that's important that this does is, now, keep in mind, I'm a gerontologist, so what I'm noticing is that all of the aging positions are mostly on the low end. So it has a stigmatizing effect as to the value of work when we know that this is so strictly related to a pay grade. So for, for me, from that angle, I just think that that's more inclusive and less stigmatizing for the people who are in various positions.
Because also, it also kind of, if you are at a, you know, a six or a seven, to be, it also gives them the opportunity that, yes, there could be lower. You know, there is about like, I'm not the bottom, I'm not the top, you know, it's, there's places.
But I could just see where the, the old system would really lend itself to different department competition based on...
Why do you get so many, and we get so... Yeah, I think not having which department is filling which one is, is just less stigmatizing, I suppose, is what I'm trying to say.
So you guys want to move this to the full council?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to move this to full council.
Okay. All right, so this should, probably next time we'll bring this up and try, I can't remember if we need to have a public hearing or not. Does an ordinance change, so we might, yeah. But I'll, I'll set that next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have anything tonight for looking at sign ordinance. I haven't done anything more on that. So we can talk about the building size provisions, which we have, remember April 7th, which I think I'm, I think it can be there, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
You're the one who can either?
You and you.
Yeah, okay. I thought I was, I thought I was filling in for you.
Not for me.
Oh, okay.
For, for these guys.
Okay.
And so I don't know if everybody saw Jessica's email. She had sent out an email that had some revisions where she looked at the tables.
I don't think I saw that one.
I did bring it up.
Is it signed or is this the bill?
This is the building. Yeah.
The, okay.
Yep. So this was, she sent an email, Jessica Allen's revisions, I think.
Yeah, it was probably a week ago.
Yeah, it was about a week ago.
I did see that, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get those in?
I do, yes. Yeah. And so maybe this time, Jen, do you want to...
Yeah, I haven't seen those at all. So, um, I brought in copies of what I had emailed just to prep for the meeting. And after the public hearing, listening to like what everybody had said and then hearing from a lot of people in the city itself, there's compelling arguments on both sides of this. I think that's why it was, you know, smart to kind of look at the proposal as it stood and then some of the comments that were put in. But one of the things that kept being brought up is that there are instances where a building would be really beneficial or that business would be really beneficial to East Hampton. But then there's instances where people like that particular kind of building is not beneficial to East Hampton. And I think that if we incorporated an economic impact review, which is common and happens to this specific ordinance, we would actually see how it would affect downtown. So we can say, you know what? They've done the review, we would lose jobs downtown or it would negatively impact smaller businesses downtown. Whereas something else, like say it's a hotel, that would be good for downtown because then people would go to restaurants and go to these things. It allows us to kind of look at what businesses would be moving into these larger sites and especially with One Ferry. I mean, I think that's a big deal. And then, I don't know, how many building lots does this ordinance actually affect? I mean, I think it's only...
There's not, there's not that many.
Yeah.
Let's put it that way. But did you see that, you know, we already have, if any, any building over 25,000 square feet triggers an economic impact statement?
Right.
So that's already built, so anything over 25. So if it was over 50, they would have to do it anyway. So...
You know who does that?
It's, it's, the petitioner would have to do it. And so then it has to be presented to the planning board. And they would probably have to, I believe that they would hire an independent, you know, probably somebody to...
Yeah, they hired their own expert. So it's just, as I understand it, they present their own expert.
Right.
Well, is that kind of shady?
Well, I mean...
Yeah, it's their expert who are paying the bill. So, you know, I mean, there's obviously room for somebody like...
This is a little bit clearer where it's an independent study that's done.
Any idea how much that costs?
Yeah, I was going to say.
No, I know.
The reason why we don't do it is because it's expensive.
No, no, and this goes on to the petitioner as well, you know?
Well, it was my, I may have misunderstood. I thought we were looking to maybe do that ahead of time, just as a, for more information on what a 40,000 square foot building would impact if it was built, you know? So the problem is is at a Walmart or is it a hotel? Those are two hugely different impacts.
Exactly.
Jennifer, sorry, I don't want to...
No, no, please.
Are you saying like there's maybe like what we currently have, the 25,000 square feet, moving that to, like this is suggesting 10,000 square feet?
Right.
Maybe saying like 10,000, instead of right now it's 25,000 square foot buildings, but because we don't have a lot of land left, although remember there's also the idea that we could redevelop, you know, areas could be redeveloped and, and could have impacts, like you said, Ferry Street. Moving the threshold down to like 10,000 square feet so there would have to be a, some economic impact done on buildings 10,000 and over as opposed to 25 and over?
Precisely. And having this, this work with, having the language in this ordinance itself, not just the, the Mass, is it Mass General law that she sent?
No, this is East Hampton ordinance. We passed, we passed this, geez, I don't remember, but it was, I was, I was on ordinance when we did pass it. So it's, and it says, "A detailed community impact statement is required for each case where proposed new commercial building or project that contains more than 24,000 gross square feet, either as a single structure or to be opened by a single tenant or combination of structures to be operated by more than one tenant. The community impact statement shall include: describe the surrounding neighborhood, the project's impact on any scenic, unique, geological, historical, archaeological features and recreational areas on the site; describe the layout of the proposed project and details site plans may be used, including scale, placement, and design of buildings and structures, lighting, parking areas, open space, or additional scenic views from the site; views of the project from distance managed points and from adjacent properties and public ways; and describe how the project is consistent with existing architecture in East Hampton." And the planning board may require that additional information be shown on any site plan submitted with an application for a special permit. So, I mean, so some of it. And then also, "A detailed financial impact statement is required."
I was going to say, I didn't hear anything about financial impact.
Yeah.
Right.
So a detailed financial impact statement is required in each case where a proposed new commercial building or project will contain more than 25,000 gross square feet, either as a single or multiple.
But it's interesting, that is a tough one because any business is going to affect probably at least one other business. So, but yeah, we're talking about stores that can affect five or six different businesses, especially when you have...
Right. And this doesn't address, what we have on the books right now doesn't address a definitive kind of business economic impact that we have downtown. It talks about the increased demand for required improvements to public service and infrastructure, the value of improvements to public service and infrastructure provided by the project, projected tax revenue to be adjusted by the project, and the impact on the surrounding land values and any potential loss or increase in tax revenues, projected impact on employment levels in the city. So this is like a little bit more comprehensive. That's pretty light information as far as an economic impact that a business would have.
Do you know of any communities that have adopted this?
There's some in Cape Cod that, I mean, I looked at a lot of them, you know? I wasn't going to bombard everybody with information. It's like, this is what we're looking at, all of the links, there were hot links in that PDF that showed examples. Sometimes they do it for the entire surrounding community, you know, so that if a big Y, you know, went down in Southampton, how that would economically impact our downtown and our creative economy and our business downtown. Which what I'm hearing is, is what people want to protect, you know, and keep...
Yeah, it does seem to me that everyone pretty much agrees that a big box would be bad for East Hampton for the multiple, the fact that he would have on the E's and the lumber stores and all the hardware stores and all the little businesses. The problem is people have different ideas of how to get that or if we go this route or then it could potentially, this could happen and if we go this route, this has happened. It would be interesting to, if you wanted to follow up more, to find out, to contact some of these communities, because I kind of feel the way Nathan does it. Does it wonder how much this is going to be?
Right.
And who does, and who doesn't? I mean, I would be skeptical if, you know, a big box came in and, we'll do our own economic part, we're going to bring tons of people in here, they're going to be filling your restaurants.
Yeah. I mean, and that's, that's...
And the, they have the effect on local businesses, wages and jobs.
Right.
You know, and the tax revenue, of course.
My, my only concern is 10, I've heard 10,000 thrown out. The reason we specifically put it at 25 is 10 is small and these studies are expensive. And so, you know, for example, if you had the, the special effects guys doing their little Halloween haunted house thing, that's probably close to 10,000 square feet.
Right.
So they would have to do an economic impact statement for, to be able to open up their haunted house. That doesn't make any sense.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so, and I also, and I don't know, I mean, as a petitioner, you could speak to this, but I feel like if we were going to be looking at, you know, adding to the, you know, economic impact statement, we should do that within that area of the ordinance, not a different type, you know, this is a, this is a unique piece of, of ordinance that's coming in as its own section. But we already have a section that kind of addresses that. So if we want to, if we want to tighten that up or, or make that better, then we should do that within that section. It can be, it can be in reaction to this, but I just don't see where it would go within this. I don't know what, how do you...
No, I think we have, I mean, certainly I think there may be some room to tweak the what we have right now. I think as Jen said, I mean, is there some, I mean, like, for example, I think we could tailor this to like retail stores, like retail construction, you know, kind of like we're saying with the size ordinance. But I agree that, you know, that would have to hit the impact analysis piece sort of separately and we could do that, you know, kind of amend what's there. You know, it could be either in this or a subsequent change to the law, you know, to look at. I don't, I don't really, either one is certainly...
Can I do the copy that just wrote the rewriting?
This one?
Yeah.
It kind of like your point, that since we do have a section that is about this, it makes more sense just to expand that area. And also I think it, because you always run at the risk, although we're in the middle of public hearings, you know, when, when you advertise something, it has, the 10 has to say relatively the same.
Changing the spirit of the...
And adding this maybe to brawl, you might have to start the public hearings, this is a little breaking.
Well, I mean, if they're already saying, oh, I'm sorry. No, that's okay. Go ahead. Um, but this is affiliated, then it's affiliated.
What's affiliated?
This section of our ordinance. But it's already part of the process if it triggers that size.
Right. If it's over 25,000 square feet, it gets triggered.
Right.
I thought that your original intent with sharing this with us was to say, let's look at the economic impact that if we limit this size for now and forevermore, what are some of the potential down the road things that we can forecast, that we might not be able to forecast without an economic impact review? So I saw it as a way to be more transparent with the long-term effects of that, you know, the space limitation proposal. And, and I looked at this as, you know, city planners and experts who would be giving their economic impact review statements.
That's how I interpreted it too. And that's why I was wondering what the cost would be. Because I thought it was your intention that we were going to do this and kind of do a study.
No, no, as part of...
Having a misread on, on our part, but I, I agree, that was my thought.
So that's, that's not what we're talking about. I'd like to discuss why we're not talking about that. And I think, from what I heard from Joe, is that that would be very, too vague to do if we didn't know what type of building that 50,000 square foot would be. So that would be sending us down too many wild goose chases about possibilities that would be completely void if it was, for example, a hotel versus a store versus whatnot, I don't know.
Right.
And even this is specific to retail, but how are you going to, to limit, you know, a 50,000 square foot shoe store? You know, I keep hearing that we don't sell shoes in East Hampton, so that would have a positive economic impact potentially versus a hardware store or a grocery or something like that.
Yeah, and I don't know if we could limit it to just retail because, you know, a hotel wouldn't fall underneath that, a restaurant wouldn't fall underneath that.
Right. But the proposed ordinance, or at least what I've been seeing, you know, from Jessica, is specific to a 50,000 square foot retail business that we're talking about.
So given that I have the wrong, came in with the wrong interpretation, can you bring me up to speed about, I'm a little far behind when you're talking about where this would be applied to this scenario?
So if somebody was going to build a business that triggers one of these lots, that part of their application process for us would involve an economic impact review, that is more comprehensive than what we currently have on the books?
Okay, so you're, you're suggesting that one way that would be is that the city could pick the person who's doing the review or the firm that's doing the review rather than the business coming in?
I presented it as the concept to incorporate it. There are a lot of different examples and a lot of different ways to structure it. We would have to see what is best for us. I mean, we can look around and see what we pay for our current review that happens. I don't know what that number is, but this is a cost that would go on the applicant.
Okay.
Because it would give us something that, that would let us know that, yes, we can clearly see that this would be a financial benefit and a job benefit. Or we can clearly see that this is going to skew the average wage in East Hampton down, you know?
So the difference in which you're proposing we look at is the only difference, who's choosing or are you asking for more information? So is it that the, in an economic impact review, you're, you're proposing that we, okay, so what I'm hearing is that we already have this on the books for buildings over the 25,000 square feet, correct? Is it?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I understand what you're saying, why the 10,000 square feet is, is cost prohibitive for our city.
Right.
I'm just trying to link what we're, what we already have on the books with what you're proposing and whether or not this is specific to the new proposal or if you're asking us to go back and look at our ordinance as it's already written to...
I was not aware that this was already in our ordinance. So when I put this forward, that's when I got a, as you know, which I didn't know. So now what I'd like to do is try and figure out how we can incorporate this kind of a stronger economic impact review that covers a lot more attributes of an economic review than what we currently have on the books. And I think it makes sense to put it with, with this building size cap.
So, and so here's, here's a thought. You know, I see the intersection of these things is, you know, since we have one that's at 25,000 square feet that is a little bit less, this is, you know, thorough, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty solid, since I'm one of the ones that wrote it, but...
It's no offense, Sam.
That's okay.
I wasn't... Times change.
But, but I can see the intersection here is maybe when a building reaches a higher square footage, that's going to require a higher level of scrutiny. You know, so maybe that's where this intersects with that. So maybe when, and you know, as opposed to 25,000 square feet, once it passes 35 or, you know, or whatever, whatever we think makes sense, that is going to add an extra layer of how is this going to make an impact?
Okay.
You know? And, and so that's, that's just a thought off in my head right as we're talking.
I think it matters how much these reports cost, like what kind of burden...
We should be able to edit that out pretty easily because Stop and Shop had to do one.
Right.
So we can, and that's public record.
True.
And, you know, so that, that's something, I don't know if...
Because I think it's a key piece of information as far as making decision on those kind of big box businesses moving into town.
Sorry, the only, one thing I'll say is, and I agree, Jen, that definitely we should look at this. The one thing about tying this with this, I mean, I just get the sense that both sides, obviously you know this can be controversial, this, like the whole, as it already kind of has been a little bit, right? The whole size provision has been a little controversial. I think where we are now is starting to get toward the some semblance of a compromise here. I mean, I'm pretty well in agreement with what Jessica made for changes there. I'm just afraid of, like, if we open up, because I think that could be, I think you said it could be a little controversial, that we could, what I'm afraid of is that, you know, tomorrow someone could pull a permit for, you know, Walmart and we have no protection. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to get some, you know, my goal is sort of get something in as soon as we can to cut that potential off. I mean, I think we, you know, certainly this is something you guys in the city council we could introduce, or you guys could introduce that right as a separate thing, right on top of this or right on the heels of this. Just set it off on its own so that, in other words, this can pass while this, because I think this requires some study and some work.
Yeah.
And I just don't want to hold up the size provision piece while the study's going on because we run the risk any day of somebody pulling a permit and, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I, I definitely hear that.
And I think for continuity of the ordinance, you know, keeping this in the section that it already exists in makes, makes sense. And then you could, then you could always have, you know, like a, a separate letter, you know, over 35,000 square feet, this level of certainty about, you know, and then, you know, whatever proposal you, you want to come up with and bring forward to us that we can then, you know, kind of look at and...
It's like we were also saying though, this is specific to retail. So if there was a hotel, I'm saying, are the current ordinance that we're, we're looking at now or we're discussing right now...
Well, I don't know. Has that changed? Because...
I thought it was...
Residential, medical buildings, schools, solar fields was Dave's interpretation.
Yeah.
And is that, has that piece gotten...
Yeah, so I think in her comments, Jessica says that you don't really need to put those limits be, now, I mean, she put that in there to show you, but I think she says in the comments that you don't really need those because we're just going to have a retail size provision. So obviously it wouldn't apply to schools, just right in the nature of the language.
There's exemptions and...
That's right. You don't need to do those exemptions because it's just going to be tailored to retail.
And I can't remember, solar fields generally are by right unless the underlying ordinance, you know, is more restrictive.
But it'll be retail uses, so I mean, I think we're, like, sale of goods is...
It says all retail and service uses. It's listed in table five dash one, which I don't have. So I don't think it is just...
Yeah, I think, I don't, yeah, that's good.
It's in the email.
So that's one of the...
If you start being specific and making it for just this section and lowering it to, well, not lowering it, but just keeping it at 25,000, putting in extra provisions, well, then how does that apply differently to the other uses that might be accessed through the general ordinance?
Right.
I agree. I think we should keep them separate and not put them together.
Jen, did you look at this as being something that would replace the size limits or did
it with something?
No, in addition to, because that seemed to be the conversation from people, is they were like, you know, what if there's something that's really beneficial that is over this size limit? Or what if there's, you know, that it gives you another criteria on which to make your decision on whether or not it's a benefit in East Hampton?
Well, certainly, calling it retail, it's hard to think of something, a retail, that big, that official. I mean, unless they sold shoes, but there's a lot of shoes.
Yeah, this is the first I'm hearing that something had only to do with retail.
Yeah. I think that's one of the, that's one of the, yeah, compromise kind of changes. Just two quick things, real quick. One is there's a myriad, and I actually think around the same site that you went to, Jen, here, they have a lot of studies up there about big box impacts generally, you know, economic impacts generally, which I think is really good to take a look at, because I think we're hearing a lot, you know, there is some kind of back and forth, like, big box could some actually, like, be good for business in town or be beneficial. And there's just been myriad studies that show that that's just, you know, not the case. In fact, it has that, you know, many adverse impacts to your local community and business and high costs, actually it has a costing of money in services and things. So there is a lot out there about the impacts of big box specifically, you know, people paid a lot of money for those studies that have already been done. Two, just on Jessica's proposal, I just want to point out a couple things. I mean, again, I'm generally in agreement with everything she says. I think she may have misinterpreted on the very back, she talks about the, we had said moving a planned business development down from five to three or two, whatever, you know, whatever people thought made sense there. And I think she thought we meant the mixed use developments down to, from, I think right now it's 10 acres, down to something less. And we didn't really talk about touching that. I think she may have just missed up, mixed up the planned business development versus the planned unit development for mixed uses. So I think that just may have been a, and I had mentioned that to her, and I think she realized that maybe after she did it. The other thing was the aggregation piece. She kind of, you know, she exempts that or says she, originally she did her piece, she had suggested that the communities that did it put it at 80. She said she's really not making a recommendation on it, I guess was sort of how I took it in there. And, I mean, I guess I, you know, my thought is that some aggregate number, I'm not, you know, I'm not married to any specific number, I thought 80 sounded like a pretty good, a pretty good number, because I think that people, just to keep things in, you know, a lot of people don't really object to, like, the use of buildings necessarily, but it starts to become when the size and the scale and the sustainability of our developments get really large, that there'd be some cap, you know, I mean, on these, on these planned business developments. You know, I haven't heard anyone talk about wanting to do something over 80,000 square feet, that's a really big development. So I think, it seems to me that some cap would be reasonable.
Well, and have we, has it been thrown out there at all? I'm thinking about maybe having two numbers, and one number would be, you know, a purely retail. I mean, and then one number could be mixed use. But one of the things I think is really important for development is to have that mixed use component, because even if the store goes empty, we still need places for people to live.
Sure.
And generally, people, if they live near retail, are gonna utilize that retail. And I think, I mean, we all know what a good thriving downtown looks like, it's generally mixed use of, you know, so even in a highway business development, that can work.
Yeah.
So, I mean, has that been put out there?
Right, yeah. So what I read Jessica's proposal now is basically, as long as, whatever you build, as long as the retail component of that is smaller than 50,000 square feet, you're okay. So you could put in the housing, could go, you know what I'm saying? So you could put in, you know, you could have your retail space and put in as much housing as you want, and that's okay. The, you know, as much as you can fill it up, because there's a lot of requirements and things that you have to follow.
Because it's 10 acres according to the chart, planned unit development.
For mixed use, that's right. You have to have a minimum of 10 acres for that type of development. So the other, the other piece though is that it would still be limited to retail, but the other piece that we had mentioned was the aggregation. So it'd say, okay, you know, in one planned business development, you couldn't have a single store, single building, more than 50,000 square feet, we can agree on that. The other piece, I guess I would just add, or again, if the board wants to add it, you know, if not, that's fine too, but, because I think this will limit big box, you know, just how it is now, the 50,000 will do that. But I have, you know, there has been some things of Walmarts or other stores running two side by sides, you have 50,000 and a 50,000, just to game your ordinance, because you don't have an aggregation around all of the stores. So you put 50,000 here, a 50,000 here, and you run essentially two stores. Again, probably uncommon, but something to potentially, you know, try to put some, you know, again, 80,000, that seemed like a pretty good number.
Well, I mean, so...
On retail, but that would be 80,000 retail.
But where I was going was that as would be to incentivize, you know, mixed use development. So potentially, you know, saying that the aggregate would be, you know, 65, but with mixed use residential, it would be 80 or 85 or something.
With a mixed component to it.
So Dave, you know, like, trying to encourage a mixed component through the ordinance.
You sure?
You know, it's just a thought. I don't know if that's been thrown out there yet, but...
Yeah. I mean, it wouldn't add, like, again, like I said, the aggregation would only count for whatever retail portion of the building is being used. So if you had, you could actually have 100,000 square feet of building, but if only, you know, 60,000 is retail or something.
Right, only the retail piece would count. But I was thinking, you know, if I was gonna be spending that much money, and then if I could put in an extra 25,000 square feet of retail if I put a two-story apartment above it, you know, and that could, we could potentially create a lot of housing in East Hampton, and, you know, at the same time, be, being responsible about, like, retail. I don't know, just a thought, but...
I think that's where, I mean, my read on kind of the discussions that have been going on is that the kind of more controversial piece is the aggregation. And that's where, you know, I think everyone, it seemed to me, should reasonably agree that 50,000 is pretty good for a single building, that that limits the big box pretty substantially. I think the aggregation piece of how do we, you know, if someone wants to put in a planned business development and have a lot of businesses, should there be some cap on the out, you know, the total development? I think there can be, you know, some discussion on that back and forth. I mean, again, I'm not married to a number there, but I mean, I thought, again, I thought 80 sounds pretty good, that I think would even include the Stop &amp; Shop that we turned down, I think.
Right.
You know, the one that the planning board turned down, which was a planned business development with a gas station, two retail buildings in the back and one in the front. I mean, it starts to get pretty, you know, that's, I think that was close to 80, I'm not sure, but...
Now, here's a question. I mean, have we addressed the fact that if you have two parcels side by side, or even if it's one parcel and they split it, and the acreage permits it, doing two curb cuts to two separate buildings that are each 50,000, as opposed to, so, as opposed to doing one curb cut to a building that's, one building that's 60,000? I think that, I think that was one of the things that was kind of thrown out there. Do we have, have we mitigated that yet? Is, and within the plans? Because, I mean, that makes sense to me, like, I would, if the need is for 60,000 and they can do one curb cut, that makes more sense than them doing two curb cuts and having two buildings that are 50,000, you know, for...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, so a couple things. One is you can do it within the auspices of a planned business development, so that's what we have now, you know, a planned business development where someone comes in, and they would have the ability to put, and what I mean a building, like, a building is defined in our ordinance as you could have like, this, kind of like in Hattie, you have a strip mall, but none of those individual pieces can be more than 50. So if you needed more than 50,000 square foot of retail, it's just that no single building within that strip can be more than 50. So Walmart's here, a firewall is enough to counter the building, two firewalls is a building. So you have your Walmart here, if it's under 50,000 square feet, or whatever else, whatever retail store here, and then if you want more retail space, you can keep it within the same building, it's just that, you know, I mean, sorry, it's a different building, but it's within the same strip of development. And that's how the planned business development works. It would look, yes. Aesthetically, it would look, but you couldn't have the same retailer because it would be separable, it would be broken by firewall, you could not have, you know, that was one of the reasons why I wanted to, again, put some kind of outward 80,000 cap or something, because you could theoretically have them side by side with a firewall in between it and run a Walmart. Again, I don't think it's their model, I don't necessarily know they would come and do that, I'm just throwing out there's one kind of way to make sure we prohibit that. And I think, again, anyone who thinks we're limiting anything, I mean, nothing is even close to 50 right now, except the mills, so anything, thinks we're limiting anything at 80 is, I mean, that, which is not, it's just not the case.
I just want to make sure that it's, I have it noted from Jessica Allen in her comments that she does not support setting an aggregate amount. And I think the conversation in here was that we weren't sure what she said, but I just want to make sure that's on the record, that she says she does not support setting an aggregate amount.
Yeah, Jessica was, in her first, in her first of those two pieces that she came out with, one she came out with and said that, you know, other cities that do it set it at 80, or the one that she saw set it at 80, that's where the 80 comes from.
Okay.
In her most recent one, she didn't support that, she left that piece out. She leaves a blank there, I think, for you guys to kind of discuss and talk about if it was a desire to put a cap. Again, I just, that's the only, I mean, again, I agree with Jessica's recommendation, I'm just, that's the one piece I thought should be considered, is maybe putting some upward limit.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the language, that we were on the same page.
Well, I think that she was under the impression that we thought that she set 80 as a recommendation.
Yeah.
And she did not. But she also said that she thinks that our maximum building coverage requirements under table 6-2 adequately address it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's lot size. When it comes down to, what do we really have for the available lots and the available spaces that can support something?
Let's see, Dave, I mean, let's, Dave Boyle owns most lots there, you know, the big ones at least, right?
Yeah, I mean, the thing is with these, I mean, you've got to remember, it's not just, like I said before, it's not just available, open lots, you know, that are not developed today, but remember, there's always the redevelopment piece that you said about Ferry Street, so really pitching the whole city is in play wherever we have a business zone that could support retail, could, you know, someone can come in and take down some of our downtown buildings and put a retail center there. That's possible, you know?
The right price, I'll tell you.
That's right, you're on your way out, right?
Okay, so I mean, I guess what I would suggest is that we, you know, read through Dave Boyle's comments, that we go through Jessica's changes.
Can I get a copy of Dave Boyle's comments?
I think he gave them to everybody at the council meeting. When he, yeah, because they came in to talk to everybody.
Council meeting or subcommittee meeting?
Was it a subcommittee meeting?
I think it was our joint, maybe our joint meeting.
Oh, it was, oh, it was upstairs.
Yeah.
So I thought it was...
I was up there, but I never got, which I probably need to brush up on everything.
I don't have an extra copy of it?
Right.
But I'm sure Barbara has a copy of it, so you can ask Barbara to give it to us.
Ask for that, you need that from Jessica.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is just her latest comments. But, so I think for our meeting with the planning board, if we go through this, you know, look at Jessica's comments and then come armed with questions, we should be in a good place. I don't know what the planning boards, if they're, you know, if they're gonna move on it at that, I'm not sure what their timeline is looking like, but...
Is this a meeting, a joint meeting with the planning board? Or it's public hearing? Because the last public hearing, there weren't any questions from this subcommittee.
There was a chance to get up and talk. I didn't, but there was a chance to get up and talk.
Well, it was more, it was, you know, it was informational. So it was a chance for the, kind of the antagonists to have their, I mean, that was basically what it ended up being, was mostly them, you know, letting us know why they didn't support it. So, which, and it's the public hearing piece of it.
I do, I don't know if the board knows this, but I just wanted to add that I believe, my understanding is that the Chamber of Commerce, there was a vote at the Chamber of Commerce, that they actually endorsed this limitation with Jessica's changes. So certainly the business community seems to be, you know, our existing business community seems to be, you know, supportive of this.
Sure. And do you know, I haven't talked to anybody yet, but the industrial...
EDIC was working on something.
The EDIC was looking at it as well, and...
Yeah, they've had trouble, they can't muster a quorum, they've had trouble getting a quorum of members together. So unfortunately, you know, we've had some good discussions there, again, kind of around economics and everything else, but it hasn't been able to get a quorum, they're trying to redo some of their membership, so, and how that's configured, so they haven't really been able to...
So imagine some of the people that care about it from there will be at the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's some of the same players. I mean, Dave Gardner, who is my kind of co-sponsor with this, he's on the EDIC, and so is Dave Boyle. So, I mean, a lot of the comments are, that you're hearing at the meeting are also at EDIC, so it's sort of...
Has there been any further development around the purpose for the ordinance? I noticed in Jessica's comments, that was one of the things she was cautioning on.
To be determined.
Right, to be determined. But again, just looking at the legality of it and...
Yeah. Yeah, I think you said to be careful, I mean, I think we should, you know, obviously, the way to craft the purposes is be a little bit careful around the protectionism idea. What she says in there, she uses, I said, actually, commented, I said, so that's pretty good, that she used the reverse commerce clause, which I said, I don't know, anyone who's not gone to law school uses the term reverse commerce law. But basically, it's, you know, the commerce clause, the constitution leaves it to Congress to regulate commerce, and so when states try to, like, use protectionist ideas to say, okay, well, you know, you can't come into, like, our community and your, just your sole purpose is to limit competition for your businesses or something, we just don't want to write that to say that in order to, you know, most, again, these have passed legal muster, these limitations generally, if you have a general limitation that's fair to everyone, which to Dave Boyle and others, I believe it was Dave Boyle that made his comments, that, look, Walmart can still come. I mean, we're not saying that business, you know, local businesses are the sole reason that we're doing this or something, it's we're setting reasonable scope and scale limitations for our city, sustainable development for our town. Walmart can still come, but they have to play by the same rules that everyone else has to play by. And that they have to, you know, if they're going to come, they have to come with, you know, something that's within the size and character of the community. So it's just being careful to not craft it to say explicitly that all we're doing is looking to, like, protect our businesses, the exclusion of any outsiders.
So, and she's suggesting...
But that is a concern though, because all we frequently keep hearing is the big box course, and that really is...
So people will understand the spirit of it.
Well, yeah, I think...
Well, the spirit of it again is, you know, what I'm getting at though, when you get to the purpose, you know, the actual purpose.
Right, right.
What is the purpose of it?
Well, Jessica actually writes something a pretty good, does she write that in there?
She wrote it, it should be consistent with the goals of the master plan, basically, which makes sense.
That's right. I mean, it's sort of, it's saying, look, I mean, there are certain community character reasons, aesthetic reasons, you know, the, the desire of the community to keep retail development small, not saying local businesses are the only ones we want here, we're not having exclusions in the ordinance that local businesses can go over 50,000, but everyone else can't. I mean, it's being, trying to set a non-arbitrary number for all businesses to compete by, which keeps within the character of the city and within, in accordance with our master plan.
Well, that's just, I was wondering if there's any more, it says to be determined, if there's any further development around that with some language that would be comfortable voting on. I'm not sure if it was your, I think it might have been your comment, but I do agree that the master plan continues to be relevant. It shouldn't be, you know, just discarded because it's eight years old or whatever.
Thank you. It's really nice to hear that.
But I'm saying, I know some people were saying previously that, you know, it's an outdated document or something like that, but I've reviewed it multiple times and within the last year, and, you know, I agree, it's a relevant document.
Thank you for that, that means a lot.
This certainly, and I think this goes, I mean, a lot of the tenants in the plan, as Dave saw, I think in your packet, he included some of that in the pack that he passed out, a lot of the points in the master plan as well as the survey, that really, this goes a long way, I think, to support a lot of the desires and goals in there, at least certainly around retail development.
I would agree with that.
That was the desire of what people, that is what people said, you know...
A significant amount of people said that.
Right. One of the least desired things that people wanted in the city was large-scale retail development, and that was evident in the survey, so...
Well, and I like, and I think it's something that was oft understated, when you talk about economic impact, but I think your idea of sustainability is really important. I mean, so many communities have dealt with these just strip malls that have been dead malls, you know?
Yeah.
And there's some communities that are big enough, North Hampton and Halit, can maybe survive it, but we're so small, I think that would be, we deal with some of our mills, and they have a charm to them.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe plus the reuse is...
It makes more sense sustainably.
It's interesting that the, the ordinance that Mike Tiscus and I brought forward, which was in 2004, was, we, we, we were a little less specific, but we basically said, no single tenant shall exceed a gross square footage of 50,000 square feet. And then no new contiguous group of buildings designed for use as retail sales establishments intended for operation by more than a single tenant shall exceed 75,000.
Wow.
We had.
You were right on it.
This was, this was in 2004, it did not pass.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, by the way, guys, if you read in there, the planning board was, or they believe it was the planning board, because Dave actually brought those that have delight to, to us and would read that. The planning board was waiting for the master plan committee to like, to, they wanted to wait for the master plan to be done and so something could be done about this. They kind of put, I think, your proposal to like table it until the master plan could be done and then deal with it. And of course, here we are in 2015, it's never been. So now, you know, now it's kind of the opportunity.
Well, and I appreciate you, you know, talking about having a more robust economic impact review on this because that was one thing that the people really were talking about. Like, you know, you have to know what it's going to do to businesses and shops downtown.
Absolutely. So, all right, so I think, I mean, what I'd like to see is if you have questions, bring them to the, to the, to the joint hearing. You guys, if you, no, that's what I, that's what I wanted to say, because you guys aren't going to be there. So if you have questions, email them to us, so we can ask them on your behalf and we, you know, I mean, and if you guys feel comfortable, I, I think what I'll do is I'll keep, I'll keep our session open until you guys can be there, even if it's only, you know, you know, a, a short period of time so we can get you guys in the discussion and, and I'll, I'll see if we can do that. But we'll try to get some relevant stuff out.
Do you have actually, it's about, do you have a folder on this I could borrow from you? So I can get myself to date of all the communications you've got?
It's just emails from Jessica.
Do you have the Dave Boyle thing?
I probably do. I'd have to go back and look, but I'll, I'll keep you covered.
Well, you can just borrow them and have bar copies.
Okay, so unless, we're not, since we don't have, we're waiting on the planning board for the LED thing, so we don't have to talk about that, but, you guys have anything else? All right, too good.
What would the, what would the next step be to take a look at incorporating this into?
Well, I would say that's going to be, we want to do that on a separate. So all you have to do is write a letter to the council and say you'd like to review this specific session and then bring it to us.
Correct.
Yeah. Simple as that.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, real quick though, you just said incorporating it into.
What we currently have on the books.
Okay, I was just making sure you.
Yeah, no, I'm all for that.
No, it's good.
So move.
Second.
On there?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Can you hit that button?
Look, Dan, I save every.